All right. Thank you all for coming to stand before prayer and remain standing for the prayers of the legions.
Praise God, Heavenly Father, if we quite regret this morning, and come before you, we want to thank you for all your many, many blessings. We want to thank you, Lord, for watching over us, being there and leading, guiding, directing. We ask you to be with our first responders throughout the county, Lord. We want to hand the protection over them to protect them. And Heavenly Father, we ask that you'll be with our employees, the city employees, the county employees, all over the county. Lord, we just ask for protection upon them because you're world, Lord, the world that we're living in is not a safe place anymore. So we just ask your hand will be upon them. Now, Lord, give us the knowledge and wisdom that we need to make the right decisions for the county, and we need the glory of Jesus, Savior. So, why please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may it see you there. I'll probably need order. And first I'll ask the two of the agenda.
The only thing is to add tear then for an update on community corrections, and I think that is the only update. Or no, we're actually adding Charlie Johnson, Russell, the attorney-elect, he's going to be coming up in time.
Make a motion for the agenda.
I'll second it. Okay. Okay, we have a family with us, we want to honor Nate Nickerson. He was a designer of a county seal, so Luke will take it. Um, so information.
We had a county seal contest that went on for about four months. We had nearly twenty entries from people all over the county. Just a few meetings ago, Nate Nickerson's design was selected. We began putting it in certain places, so today the commission's going to present Nate with this flag of the seal. He was generous enough to give us quite a few different designs so we can have it embroidered. We are, this seal is also going to be showcased in Merrill County Day this year and will be in all of the coasters that are provided to our legislatures. So we wanted to recognize Nate by giving him this flag, and then again, we recognize the Merrill County Day, but recognition will, the commissioners will present Nate and his family with his flag and get a picture. Liz isn't here yet, but I can certainly take a picture and make sure she gets that.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You don't want to give your report?
Whatever is good.
Yeah, let's do, let's do that real quick.
I didn't know, I didn't know things changed, sorry. I just wanted to let you guys know that our counselor who just passed her test to be a licensed professional counselor is leaving us. She gave us her three weeks notice, so her last day's Wednesday. We've been doing a lot of therapy counseling and all that virtually anyways, right now, due to our numbers being low in both counties. I'm just going to go ahead and use staff that we have here, we're doing virtual. Sean's still in Great County full time, he's our site supervisor up there. He is on vacation next week, so my staff's going to have to go up there and cover the office. We'll figure it out, we're going to do a lot of virtual services, things like that, right now, I'm not asking to replace her quite yet. But as we all know, the numbers can change from day to day. I mean, you know, I think two weeks ago, we got five new referrals up there for services. So, like I said, we're going to handle virtually for now and hopefully, she just got a better deal and they even offered to pay her student loan, so I can't blame her at all. So I mean, she's, she's done well, she was a heck of an asset for us up there, everybody loved her, and I was afraid this was coming. So, I just wanted to let you know that that'll be a change, so unfortunately, there was nothing else we could do anymore.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll miss it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks for that, so.
How many employees you have up there in Great County?
We just have two.
Just two?
Yeah, we just have two.
One now.
One now.
One now.
So, we'll be going back and forth to cover that, and Sean's more than capable of taking care of it for a while, and like I said, virtual these days with new services.
You used to go back and forth, didn't you?
We did, yeah, I always had two counselors go up twice a week before we had anybody up there, and so then that's when we had the offices up there, so.
But you do, you do see that you'll have to hire somebody?
Eventually, I believe so, hopefully, when the numbers increase in both counties, hopefully. So, when that time comes, I would absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I did, and I got the same yesterday, so I told her, I know, but I told, I didn't know she was off. Trying to catch up, but I did let her know. Yes.
Mayor, do you have anyone else coming?
Uh, no, I believe that's it.
Okay, so it's okay, we'll just move you over now. This is Bill Shepard, Mayor Ridley, and his counsel, and Chief.
For starters, I want to apologize for the news, for saying we was lied to. But we never received the letter that was supposed to come from the D E P. That letter somehow got in the hands of Gary Howe. Gary Howe sent that, that letter to the mayor's private email address. It, it needed to be sent to the town's email address that he checks every day. So, I just want to apologize that that was even in that article, it shouldn't have been there, but we did feel that way because someone didn't, D E P didn't send the email directly to him. The email went to Gary Howe somehow, and Gary Howe sent this personal email address.
I know Gary was in touch with the D E P, so that's probably why.
And, and he don't check his personal email very often, so, in, in that concerns, I mean, if it, if it, Gary would have sent it to his computer at, at town computer, we would have acknowledged that we got the letter. But, one thing I wanted to bring up, and I'm sure everybody knows I shut the water off.
We heard.
And that, that's my doing, what I'm, I'm working a whole different side of this.
Now, that was because the meter was covered?
Because the whole water line was covered.
Okay.
And, and they have now moved, but they filed a, a formal complaint with the Public Service Commission. So now, the water will not get turned on until the Public Service Commission's investigation is complete.
Which could take a while.
They say forty to sixty days. I, I'm working with, and I, I'm sure Dutch probably got a phone call yesterday.
Yeah, Dutch has been working on this pretty heavily and.
And I, I know.
And you're probably aware.
And we met with Dutch last Friday morning.
And he met with the people at the.
Right.
Nothing, maybe twice.
And, and we are aware of that now, everything. But, and the, the last time we was here, everybody kept saying we'll contact Adult Protective Services. So we did contact Adult Protective Services. I got a letter right here from the Department of Human Services that says they don't live without a dress, no. You're more than welcome, this was sent to our office yesterday.
Where do they, no, they still live.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we know. We're trying every office ourselves.
Yeah, so, and basically, that's what I want to, you know, which, like I said, when Dutch come down last Friday, we figured out why the email wasn't gotten. We have a copy of it now, so that's, that's where I stand now. Chief Yonther's going to speak a little bit, but I just want to make sure you got your apology.
And we wanted Dutch to talk about this a little bit too.
Well, I'm just going to take maybe three minutes. When we were here last time, I got a copy of the letter that I guess Gary Howe started the investigation with the D E P, which is dated nine twenty-seven. And I also have a copy of the letter when the investigator came out on ten one, which was thirty-eight days ago.
The D E P investigator?
Yeah, and that was a twenty-day notice, on ten one, a twenty-day notice of violation was issued. I talked to the D E P investigator on Friday, Mr. Swick, and I asked him, I said, hey, it's been, it's been about thirty-eight days, you know, twenty days has passed, what's the next step? Well, I guess I'll have to go back out there. And I said, what's going to happen after, you know, you go out there and you haven't cleaned it up? He said, well, we'll issue him another twenty-day violations. And I said, well, what happens after that? And guess what he said? We issue another twenty-day violation. And the final, the end of the conversation was, when will these people finally get cited for having an open dump? And his response was, this is exactly what he said, he said, they may never clean the property up, and they may never get cited. That the D E P does not have the authority to issue a citation immediately like the D N R does. Why didn't we call the D N R? And I said, we just called the D N R.
D N R.
So, I mean, I'm going to be honest, I, I, I did call the head of D E P yesterday, and I'm waiting on him to call me back. Because I just, I just would like to know how long this is going to go on until something's done. I, I, I talked to the D O H one Saturday, they called me after we talked, they called me in reference to this re, reprogram that they're cleaning. They have another program called D Lab, they'll come in and clean everything up. That might be the way we get this cleaned up. I mean, I, I, I'm not going to hold my breath with a D E P to do anything, but I guarantee if you spilled some oil on your driveway, they would be there writing you a ticket. Somebody would be there about oil being spilled in your driveway. But I just wanted to, you know, clarify that, you know, the D E P, Mr. Swick, I don't even think he was going to come back down. I mean, he, he said, well, I guess I'll have to come back down and look at it then, and, you know, if you, if you don't keep on these people, they're not going to clean it up. That's, that's the main thing, you got to keep on them. And this program, this reprogram, if they don't, if they clean it up, if the state comes in and cleans it up, they send somebody out twice a year, they're going to come out and look at the property, and if it, if it gets out of hand, the state will come in and write them citations. They, they take over and they will write the citations to them. So, if we can get it handled that way, I mean, all the town wants is we just want it cleaned up, that's it. It doesn't matter who cleans it up, as long as we can get it cleaned up.
Dutch and I talked earlier, he, he's been struggling having the man from the Department of Highways going back. Everything is in motion to get.
Talking about?
Actually, I'm talking about Noah Weber. Noah Weber is not really Department of Highways, he is with the, and heads over this reprogram.
When they called me on Saturday, they told me that they were going to, that he was going to be up, that's the name it was mentioned.
Who called you, Noah or Marcus?
Marcus Rice said Noah would be up this week to, to meet, to either contact you or go out to the property and actually meet with them to discuss what needed to be done to get the property cleaned up. But they were planning on coming up this week, so he, our, Marcus is tied up down in Jefferson County, and, you know, if you try to get ahold of him, it might, it might take you a while to get ahold of him. But he did call me on Saturday and told me that they were coming up this week to meet with them.
Well, yeah, that's what Marcus said, I, I did put a call in to Noah Weber, and he hasn't called me back yet, which I just, I just called him, I just got the number over the weekend, I called him, waited till yesterday morning, called him, and he hasn't called me back yet. I mean, the people are, when I discussed the program with the people, that the residents, I actually talked to the two boys the one evening, they were willing, but they want to talk to the mother, and the mother called me the next day, and she's, she, they're really, they're willing to be involved in it. And so, well, we just got to get them in there, get Noah in there to get them, you know, we have a verbal commitment from them to allow this program to help out, but we need to, need to get Noah in there to, to get this moving forward.
Yeah, so the timeline, we don't know yet.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Trying to get.
This, this reprogram, it could take, it could take six months, which, if, 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 if there's an end in sight, and we know that there's an end in sight, that's a lot different than twenty days, twenty days, thirty days.
Right.
As long as we know something's going to happen.
I don't think it does any good to cite those people. I mean, are they going to pay attention to it? Probably not.
They paid attention, we shut the water off.
Well, the thing about, I mean, that's an incentive to get them to clean it up. With the town, we don't want to see anybody pay a, a financial burden, you know, that they can't, and these people can't afford it, I'm sure. And, I mean, I don't think town wants is them to clean it up. If we can get it cleaned up, that's, that's, that's all we want. I mean, if, if they're going to bring people in to clean it up, but the way they talk, when they come in to clean, they're going to clean. I mean, if they're, they're taking it all, and if there's, they, they told me if there's a door off of a building and it's falling down, or one, or the trailer was, a good example was the trailer was no roof. They're going to take that whole trailer, they're, they're not going to leave it sit there, it's, it's served no purpose, so, and that's going to be the hard part, getting these people, because I know I have things that probably you would think are trash, but to me, they're a treasure, and I know they're like that too, so. But some, something's got to be, you've got to give it a little, so, and that's all we want, we just want the town, we just want the, the property cleaned up, that's it. And, and we got one of the gentlemen here, he's a, he's a neighbor, he, he just wants it cleaned up too, that's all, that's all we want.
And it's an embarrassment, calling the gas down there and putting the gas line in, and they're up there, and they can't stand the pews, the rides, I mean, it's an embarrassment to the town. And what if we all look like that? I mean, I mean, you're breaking the law, I don't care who you are, whether you're poor or not, you're breaking the law. Time's something to be done. Amphor, the lapidated trailers in from Fort Ashby and bring them into it. And it's, it's ridiculous, and it's unfair to question it. And, and it shouldn't take months and years to do.
Dutch is staying on it, he's going to be on trying to keep, keep them, get them moving. You know, it won't take them long to clean it up once they get there. You know, then.
Well, my only point was when I shut the water off, I, I gave a specific area that had to be cleaned. Now, they didn't get rid of it, but they moved it. This book doing, so they got the capability to do something.
I don't understand why they don't have someone haul this car away, they get a little bit of money out of it.
Even their trailers.
Yeah.
The, the D E P, the pictures, I think you provided, you emailed them to us? I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of money there, it's crap.
Yeah, there is, yeah, there's washing machines and, and, you know, things like that. Now, the thing of it is, the state's going to come in and take it all, then I'm going to get it done. You know, we'll get cleaned up, but, so Dutch will be on them, trying to get the state to move. I wish we could move faster, but it's this.
They just going to take time, it's, it's just all there is to it.
But there is an end.
And then, I, I do, I'm like, Mark, I do believe, if Reed comes in and does that, then even if it ain't till next spring, it, still, we know it's eventually coming.
Yeah.
But I, I thought that.
Hopefully being before spring.
I thought something was said to us that if Reed come in and they, and they verified that, that they would clean it up within sixty days.
That's what, that's what Mark is writing. We haven't heard that number, but I'm hoping that, that would be great.
Yeah.
If we can just commit to it, rape and also the people.
We don't have anything ready, it's just verbally, but.
Well, I'd say if Reed comes and look at it, they're going to make him sign something that says, oh, they're going to make him sign something.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be some agreement, but at least verbal commitments a little bit better than what we have before. Yeah, I apologize for it taking so long, but it's just one of those things that, you know, I, I've been down there, I was, I just went down Saturday, taken one, yeah. And it doesn't look like anything's been cleaned up, but.
Yeah, when I was there Wednesday, it's all, I thought it looked like it'd been cleaned up a little bit, but basically, just stuff been moved around.
Yeah, they just pushed it out of the way so that they.
They just moved it around a little bit, and covered up a couple of things with tarps and.
Right, anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just hope you accept our apology.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, we, we met Friday, what happened there, no email, no.
Yeah.
No other was, and at that point, I had, I had not received anything, but who was to think on your private email to have it sent there? I mean, Gary knows, Gary knows my phone and number, he knows them.
Yeah.
But it. What I stated was a fact, that was a truth, but when you came Friday, we, we figured out there was in fact a letter.
Yes.
What, then come in a form of paper.
Yeah.
And I was looking.
So let me, so let me add to that, that when I got the email from Gary, I didn't know how Gary got involved in it, but when I got the email from Gary, that, and I saw you was, it was actually sent to you, and we were C C'd on it. But it was actually sent to you, I thought, well, okay, Ridley got it, and then a little bit later, I talked to Bobby, and he knew about the citation, so I just assumed you all had got it. And, and so, maybe I didn't follow through with it well enough, and I apologize for that. But, you know, when I saw the comments in the paper, it kind of ticked me off a little bit, like I said Friday, and I just, I wanted to know why you all felt like we lied to you when I knew that the thing was sent out. So it helps to understand, it will benefit, and I appreciate your all's apologies.
I hope this cleared this up, so, yeah. But I appreciate what yous are doing, especially what these guys are doing, but eventually, it will happen.
It would be great if we could just sit down there and say, clean it up and it's done, but.
It don't work that way.
No, it doesn't. So, yeah, I was just made aware of another place, up New Creek, and I, I went up to see the, see the place, a lady lived there, her house is falling down, the windows are busted down, they're boarded up. Half of the roof on one side of the building is taped in, and just trash everywhere. You know, you feel bad for the lady, you know, she's old, lives there by herself, and I don't know how, I don't know how to help her, you know, so.
You would think county would be getting a chunk of personal property taxes, all the trailers, the cars, the buildings, and I still, still have a question mark there, was that?
It would be nice, it would be nice if there was some revenue stream that we could put in a pot, that we clean up things like this, because every, every county has, every town has them. You know, it's, it's.
See, our problem is, it's just not in our town.
Right, yeah, yeah.
If it was there, we, we would, we would have handled it a little bit better.
Yeah. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, nine A M, we have a friend with Charlie Johnson, he's a prosecutor-elect, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Yes. They get me in on short notice, I just wanted to stop by and introduce myself, I'm Charlie Johnson, the prosecutor-elect. Appreciate you guys getting me in here early, so I can, you know, get a jump on everything at the office, figure out things that I need to do for when I officially take office. A bit of a list growing, but we're going to.
As I say, it looks like you have a workload ready for you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was day one, second I walked out the door, this is what you need to be fantastic, so. But I, I definitely look forward to working with you all, doing what I can to maintain the high caliber of prosecuting attorney you all are accustomed to, but also, you know, do what I can to modernize the office, increase efficiency. Because it's, yeah.
Modernize the officer.
Yeah, it's, it's, I asked Cody, I said, have you got him a computer yet? Because I feel sure when he comes, he's going to walk.
I got him, you're off to go that one out when he gets here.
Yeah. I got, I got that worked on myself, so. Well, you know, you do what you can, and I'm really, really looking forward to doing what I can to keep this community safe and really just, just work to improving out what we do in the judicial system.
And the commission's looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so let's get back to the regular agenda, Minnesota pre-let meetings.
There are three work sessions and a commission meeting, but I couldn't quite finish the, the last, the meeting, the seven. There's a couple of things I need to call up them for our finalization.
Make a motion for the.
I'll say.
And approve it also.
Assuming the county's payments and stuff to the end.
Yeah, that's the, county's payments, the other states, Office of the Sheriff, October twenty-fourth, month of reports. What's that? What, those? What, the bills on them? Yeah, the reports and all, correspondence? Okay, sure. All right. Want to go to commission order of correspondence, which is all, isn't it? Orders and appointments? Oh, no, wait a minute, she was talking about the county's payments, the other rates and stuff, just moving that to the end. Yeah, I thought we were, it sounded that. Always, always.
He's physically putting it on.
Okay, got you, yeah, that's, that's fine, yeah, that'll work, okay, let's go back to correspondence, Office of the Sheriff, two thousand twenty-four, month of report. Yeah, that's a good idea. Always looking to see how much money I have in there, we can pass, but not much in there.
No, been trying to subsidize other things to, for the new officer over there, out of that.
Is coast difference a little higher than we had predicted?
I'm sure that our bigger chunk of revenue that public, our carryover is better. So that's what we're possibly talking about, you know, you can get one of the, pay the line of cruisers out of that, I think, all of the, everyone's already, you know. We're going to need all the money to find here in a bit, so.
Hey, we received a letter from Leon Hinkle. And recently noticed it has been at least two years since I requested to join the airport authority. As such, I think my term is about to expire, if it hadn't already, the purpose of this letter is to inform you that I am willing to continue serving Tommy Callen Airport Authority, if that is your desire. Has this term required?
Yeah, I spoke, called him and told him I needed a letter, because my term actually expired in July twenty-four.
Okay, so do you want to reappoint him? Yeah, so I make a motion.
Yeah, we, yeah.
You want to just wait?
Board of appointments, all business, okay, go ahead, we're down to your own business.
I make a motion, we reappoint Leon Hinkle. Now, second, and then approve it also. Okay, F A on courthouse annex approval project, plus a pay application number twenty, for the amount of three hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and eight six cents. I need approval on that, make a motion, we pay that, my second, and I approve it also. Do you have any updates that you want to mention?
I'm, where are we else reading that?
All business update on the courthouse.
We just approved AM.
Oh, um, I was reading that, it's not paying attention, everything's coming along, they were painting, actually, they were laying floor yesterday. I do think there'll be first, except for getting over there. Nelson's supposed to help finish the concrete work today, I'm hoping they're down there now, but everything's coming along, it's finishing up, they're putting glass in windows, the elected officials' offices have glass in their doors now. And they've got the window framing in for the exterior windows, like I said, ninety-five percent of it's painted, and they're putting floors down, so it's really shaping up very nicely. Ninety-five percent of it's painted and they're putting floors down, so it's really shaping up very nicely.
Any questions? What?
I think that's all I have.
Okay, any update on park, we run a bike trail, it's carpeted, oh, tunnel, and there's no info with carpeted, oh, yeah. Um, we have a. I don't have my schedule, actually, uh.
Okay, great, other than it's not good. Uh the tunnel has fallen in some more and it is getting in more and more disrepair every day. And I'll just leave it at that.
We applied uh for funding through Senator Chapater's office, Senator Manchin's office, but. It wasn't approved. So it's an ongoing ongoing effort trying to find funding to repair that tunnel. We have a bike trail planned for the north end of the county, but we need the tunnel to make it happen. Because we have to go through the tunnel. So everything on that bike trail is dependent on whether we can get the tunnel repaired.
We're talking several million dollars.
Right, yeah.
It's not, it's not just a hundred thousand dollars or ten thousand, it's like three and a half million or something.
So it's going to have federal government. To help that. So we'll keep pursuing it. Maybe since uh justice will be in there, maybe we could call him.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it'll be much more helpful, man.
Well.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, do you have anything to report on the health department? Final draw for the local health unit?
Yes, there is a final draw. Um when last time you guys did a draw, that was supposed to be the final draw, um. But Regent Hates admin fees have not been charged yet. Um so I've got their final draw for their admin fees.
How much is that?
There was fifteen thousand left, and it was that one.
Let's see, yeah, fifteen thousand.
Okay, would that be coming out of county funds, or was that coming from the health department?
It's a draw from the funds.
That's right, okay.
Yes.
So it's not coming down to hiring officers? Right. Yes, I have a motion to approve the final draw for the mobile health unit, which is administration fees. Prove that also. Okay, update on healthcare funding?
Anything on the uh. Object for the bidding?
Uh the bidding thing will be the second meeting in December. So they had their reconstruction needed, but I haven't seen any additional agenda issue or anything, so. My assumption is it's going well.
Are you saying it had to turn out, the reconstruction?
Yeah, no, I thought so. Too many people there, because I think uh maybe four companies. I think it was maybe four, four different companies there, well, probably more than that, but there was a couple companies there together, they were all working together, so.
Um I forgot, the amphitheater, we did have the free bid meeting. Um you had three contractors show up that are interested in bidding it. Um we're supposed to open events at the December third meeting, so we will see what those come in at.
Thank you.
As far as that people are funding, we're taking applications. Uh that are in this week, and then next Monday, we have a meeting to do over the applications and review them.
Do they have applications here? Do they have, like, a friend was here.
I'm not sure if she does or not.
Might just go on, or they're on the website.
They can, they can email.
I can print one out if you need one, please.
Probably need to pull one out, I guess.
Okay, update on town originally ongoing issue with unsated property, I believe we've already handled all of that. In Marin County, prevent a resource officer's position and request to change to civil service, if the sheriff would like to speak on that.
Yes, uh we had discussions with the civil service, they are not opposed to it. Seems that all the officers are already certified. And they believe it'll be an easy process. Met with the officers yesterday. Uh they had met with themselves and discussed the pros and the cons, and I met with them yesterday. Answer any questions they had as far as the pros and the cons, and they all agree that the benefits far outweigh. Uh any uh cons that may keep being under civil service. Um I explained to them that they were, I was, would not force them to go under. But any officer that didn't go under, if the county commission decided to fund that. Would still remain an outwilling employee and would not be guaranteed anything. Um or any of the benefits that civil service have. They they all agreed and said, we we want this. Um I provide you with copies of what they signed and an agreement to it, one officer, I believe, has COVID. And he couldn't be here, couldn't be at the meeting, but I discussed this over with the phone. Um I didn't even get the question out of my mouth, so he said, I wanted, I said, I need something right. I will go through what I did the last time with getting the PR, PRO out there. So that's where we're at, it's all a matter of now whether you all. Wish to do the additional funding that it would take to put them there. And then we can proceed on myself and Captain Wing, we're with the civil service committee.
And they'll have to take a test.
Not, no, if they do, the the civil service can can form their own test if they desire to. It doesn't have to be a state test. Um again, how that process would proceed. We will get with them on, but right now, we're at the point where. If the funding's gonna be approved, then we'll move on, and if not, we'll thank them for their consideration and continue as we are.
But this letter, these letters here, there's only one person wants to join.
No.
No, you better read the letter. You better read the letter. Read the, read the letter.
I do acknowledge that is under consideration to place presentable resources. I do wish to be placed under civil.
I do not wish to be placed under civil, I see that, I'm talking about.
It says, uh understand that if I do not wish to be placed under civil service. I will remain at an outwilling plane, will have no protection afforded by the civil service. I do wish to be placed under civil service, I do not wish to be placed under civil.
I think what we ought to do, according to the way that the letter, way the paragraph, where you say they don't want it, but. I understand, I understand, I can read it, I can read it, don't need input. Uh I think we need to put this off to receive exactly how much it's going to cost us.
Roughly about eight thousand a person?
A person, that's twenty-four thou- roughly, so you're looking at twenty-four thousand dollars.
That's plus the one we already have up there.
Yeah, a year.
So you're looking at thirty-two thousand.
But you're gaining them for the summer.
We are gaining them for the summer and when there's no school in, that kind of thing.
So you're getting three full-time deputies in the summer when they're in their school. Instead of being a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for twenty-four thousand.
Now, what was that?
Well, uh the starting deputy makes fifty-two. Part of their salary is already.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so that that is where in the benefit lies.
In theory, there's substantial overtime savings for the summer too, to cover vacations. For sure, that's gonna be the biggest benefit of all vacations.
And then how does this one affect Energy Express, because they want PROs there during Energy Express?
Well, if they, when the school board notifies us that they want to PR, a one or two PROs there. That's where their duty will be. During eight hours of of their shift will be at at the Energy Express. Uh but. That money that they were using to pay them to be there has ended. So because the COVID money is gone. And John has already told them. There's probably not gonna be any work for the summer. Because they don't, so unless the school board wants to add additional funding for the summer for. That program, then they would have to, they would have to provide that additional funding. Above the hundred and eighty days to have them there, so.
And I guess my question is, the pro officers are we are aware that they will be working year with them, right?
They they won't, because if they're not working this summer. They gotta pay their insurance. There's no money coming out for their insurance, they get nothing. So June, July, August, they're they're responsible for that.
Yeah, the county won't spread out their pay for twelve months like they do for any other service personnel, teachers, they spread out the pay for twelve months. They don't with them, they only pay them while they're in there.
They're.
Because they're actually employees, they're actually employees in the sheriff's department.
Have you talked to the school board about this?
We didn't even. I I talked to Troy. And he told me that they were continuing to reimburse us at the rate. Uh what they have been doing, which is the the base rate of a teacher's salary or how they've been. How they've been reimbursing us now, so.
But that's where that difference comes in, plus if the school board, and has it, as it's been in the past. If they decide to employ them over the summer, then we invoice them separately and they reimburse us. So that's an agreement.
For any other per.
Right, anything above and beyond the hundred and eighty days that they're already reimbursing. They provide the information to clerk's office, they invoice them for that. At anything over, and that's why it's talking about an energy express. Last year, they had COVID grants, they were paying them forty dollars an hour. That money is gone, so they have, they don't have at this time any funding to provide them employment. Beyond the hundred and eighty days.
Do we have any idea whether it will save us on the weekend?
It'd all be theoretically, because.
I don't buy savings on the overtime, because we was told if we hired two new deputies back. Uh five, five or six years ago, it saves on overtime and overtime. It shot through the roof.
We haven't had those two deputies.
You did.
No, we didn't, since I've been here, we've been two deputies short.
We hired them.
Yeah, but they only worked five months and got fired.
But it never, it never.
So how are you gonna see the savings?
We did. You can sit and argue all you want, but we wasn't here when they was, they was hired.
I know, but I was here whenever they graduated the academy, and soon afterwards, they had to resign because being criminally charged.
It cost us more money than what it was worth, because when they put them on.
And the chances too, if the school board does use them for the summertime and pays that difference. That eight thousand dollar difference we're talking about might actually be part of the reimbursement too. So that would actually be less of an effect on the counties.
You, the eight thousand dollars you're.
And they work the summer, because see that, that's what that eight thousand dollars more or less is covering.
But we won't give reimbursement to county for the.
Yes, if they weren't the summer. If they want a summer program, the school agrees to pay that, and we reimburse.
So then we wouldn't be levels of the eight thousand.
Fill them for the regular school year, and then if they work the summer, we fill the school separately for those, and they reimburse it. But that's something the school board decides every summer, whether they're gonna do that or not. But they do reimburse us from that time.
Okay, can you, can you get us a definite price of each employee, now we know how many, because before I asked you, you just gave general numbers. Can you give us a definite listing of each one? And the difference with uh going to civil service? And what we get reimbursed, how much it will cost?
It'll vary as.
Each one, each one will be different because of their time of service.
The school will look at that, and they will set a salary per each officer.
I understand that, that's what I'm asking, can you provide that? And the difference of each one? Those are, those are rough numbers, I think.
That's what their numbers are right now. I mean, I can't say what they're gonna get paid next July.
Do they increase every year, do they get deep?
Oh, they get a nice.
Okay, yeah, because they're basically base teachers, is how they pay them.
Yes, yes. And they get a raise whenever, yeah, the teachers get a raise, they provide a raise.
So what you're gaining is, you know, snow days, Thanksgiving week, uh Easter, spring break.
Cutting off based on their education level.
Summer.
Yes, yes, it's based on whether they have any.
Unless they're.
But now they might be working for the county through Christmas break or nothing, though, where they they get their time.
That's part of that, so if they give some service rules out.
Sheriff's Department would need them.
They would.
They could pay.
If they get a snow day, they would come.
The last, last time we had a meeting, because the day was, you know, they worked the two hundred days for the school year, just for the summer.
Every week we'll have to have forty hours, right?
Yeah, they they still respond to work, but they'll do traffic instead of.
This is the.
But no matter what, they'll have to work forty hours a week, it's like a regular day. So if their school's off, they'll still have to make up forty hours for the.
So this is a deputy.
So we're gonna have to pay them.
No, no, it's part of what you're paying.
It's part of what you're paying.
What you're paying them for is to work forty hours a week for the entire year. But the school is going to reimburse us for the entire school year at the base of.
For the hundred and eighty days that they're at the school.
So just because Christmas break is during the school year, they're still gonna have to come work forty hours for us. But the school's reimbursement is not gonna change, because the school's already paid for what they're paying for anyways.
So your, their salary is not gonna change, the reimbursement is not gonna change.
It's just the when they will be required to work and when they won't, whereas now, if they have a snow day, they stay home. If they're.
And then they might be utilized though, if under.
But under civil service, they would be required to go ahead and report to work. Pay vehicle license, take complaints, just like the Holy Spirit. Like any of the other deputies.
But but they are aware of that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Because.
They they see the benefits.
I don't want to get them blindsided.
I explained that to them, and I said, you're getting vacation in the holiday time. But, you know, you, it's it's up to you guys, I'm leaving it up to you guys.
Okay, how will they work their vacation, how will they work their vacation, just like regular deputies, correct?
Yes.
But right now, they do not get a separate vacation.
Well, right, but then they're off during the summer, so it's all up to the vacation.
But except for like, you know, the past few years, they haven't, they haven't been off the summers, they worked the COVID money. Right, yeah, so.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion with table this till the next meeting, I like to talk to Troy some more, school board is.
Are you trying to get more money out of them?
Maybe. I don't know if we get more money out of them, but. So we're, we're, we're looking more, after looking at this, we're looking more almost probably tenth out of the gap. I mean, probably closer, you think? Because that there's younger than there, his pay's not calculated right. He just, his name's not even on there, he just started, so he he's higher paid than that.
But he has, uh, the school board looks at his education, so he's not coming in at a base. I mean, he would not, they would reimburse it at a higher rate.
He's coming in for with his degree.
Yeah.
Yeah, each each one that had, the more service they have and the higher salary they have, that also increases their retirement, which is a cost to us. Which the retirement is double.
It could, well, it could be between, it could be between eight and ten.
Uh the school board's gonna pay us for a hundred and eighty days a year.
Right. So we wanna, we just.
That's what you're gonna pay for.
At the most, just figure.
Yeah, so the the that, your all's decision is the only thing that that anybody's waiting on before we do this.
I thought we should have a zoom meeting with them.
We did meet with Troy and John Wilson and me and JJ here that one day.
And then the sheriff met with the deputies or with the resource officers. And that's where these letters come from, okay. So you made a motion to table this, so we can discuss it.
Very well.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I'll let the guys know, they wanted to know if they received the decision made, I'll let them know it's been tabled and they'll know the later date. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so we probably need to figure on about ten. I'm just a little, so maybe, I don't think quite, I don't think quite he's gonna handle it, I think it might be just a little bit more than eight. So probably worst case scenario, we need to. Calculate ten, just so that we know we're covered.
So let's say it's ten, either a yes or a no.
Yeah. Well, I guess my question is, is your money in the sheriff's budget to handle, it'd be the other ten, or do we're gonna have to make some?
That's why this is on the agenda, whether you guys are gonna cover that funding.
Yeah, so can I wear a pocket?
And then the school board, like I said, they'll reimburse, if they do use them during the summer, then they'll reimburse them at that salary. Okay, the general election, uh just needs to make a motion to um approve the twenty twenty-four general election results. And as the Board of Canvassers assign the certificate of results, which, yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion, we approve the general election results.
I'll say.
And I prove it ourselves.
I need your signature, your signature.
Okay. There's a new, new business for the sheriff emergency hire.
It was on the agenda last time, but we didn't.
Yeah, he might be standing out there.
Emergency new hire, are you going to discuss that?
It's like, is he still there?
Yeah. All right.
The governor.
And Chris, it was on the agenda last night too, but it.
Okay, let's bump down to the American Legion riders request for funding.
That's in your quarters.
Yeah, I saw that. Okay, American Legion Riders will hold fifteen annual statewide ride for charity. The charity. Shows this year will be the American Legion Mountaineer Boys State and We're Dender and Girls from State Program. And it goes on to say, um, a little bit of history about each. Uh, funding is a pretty fun for success and growth of both programs. We would like to ask you to donate five hundred thousand dollars for, or five thou-. Five hundred dollars for the, I know it scared me. Five hundred dollars for the program. The benefit to these young people is immersible.
I'm going to move, I'm good with that feeling. I'm moving up. Donate five hundred dollars.
I'll second that. I put that on five hundred. Yeah, it's five hundred dollars, not five hundred thousand. No, your comment is not in the wrong. It, I just read it wrong. I know. Looking at all those big numbers and then.
The last meeting, you're talking about what thirty five hundred, not thirty five thousand.
Yeah, I know. Uh, I'll go to the sheriff emergency hire.
Yes, we made, I made emergency hire, uh, since we're actually right now three people sure. Uh, he's, he's certified when I have to attend the academy and is slated to start, uh, December first.
Does he have to attend the academy?
No, I didn't think, because he was approved with grace, yes. Um, after we did his background and everything, we, um. We believe that, uh. He, he knows he's on year probation, knows he has to take the test and pass. Um, and which is will be given.
We're looking around the fourteenth of December.
For the testing?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the testing.
So you guys start to act with that.
No, 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 he starts in the first December.
Okay.
Because he, uh, as, and again, uh, I, I respect the way he need to give his other employee two week, two week notice. But, uh, I believe he already knows the county, um, so his. Field training time will be shortened because most of that is spent trying to get people to learn the accounting. So that he already knows the county. That's why he has a child here. So leave this better grounded, um. And, uh, he's, he just seemed like a pretty good guy. Again, uh, we've had deep conversations with him and, uh, um, he's looking forward to come to work and, uh. We're looking forward to getting him on the road and getting him started. Um, it's a great benefit to us because number one, our actually county that hasn't been great is a little late. And to be able to find somebody that's already certified and, and he.
That's kind of great for the county.
Yes, and it would save thousands of dollars on the foster training and travel and.
Let's start work day one, pretty much. You can start work on day.
Yeah, he's going to be riding with, uh, JJ or Roger probably for about the first month. Uh, getting him in on our policies, procedures, um, different things like that. And then probably we're looking at the first January, he'll be on the road when he's on.
Perfect. So that motion to approve the emergency hire, that I second that.
I apologize. I, I even forgot it was on there.
Are you able to give his name or does he stop to?
Yeah, they have, I can't remember his first name right off.
Cameron is, yeah.
Cameron, yes, Cameron. I couldn't, I was trying to think.
Is he a local guy?
Part of.
Is he a local guy or?
Yeah, he was originally from Greenbrier County, um. Uh, he did up here with the state police. He's been working with Bridley. We spoke with the state police and, and they had nothing to praise for him as a person. And said he was on the, the right track. They had, uh, believed he, he was. Going to get better, but he had some personal issues that were going on at the time and, and decided to shut down. Relationship wise with, in Greenbrier County and that has since been alleviated. He's now married to a local girl here and has a child and, um. Nothing but good reports from originally and nothing. Actually, there was no bad reports on his background. They just said there was some issues that was causing him not to be able to rest and, um, they felt that he was going to progress. Uh, but he just chose to leave and at that time and.
Your, your home issue bleeds into work.
Oh, yes. Yes, it does. And, uh, he seems very happy now and again, very grounded. And he's, I mean, he's young. I mean, to me, he's, he's twenty six. So, you know, it, it, you know.
To me, he's just a kid.
A lot of things, yeah, a lot of things hitting him in the face all at once there. So, but, uh. I, uh, after we, we got his background and sat down and talked to him personally, he, he understands our, our expectations. And, uh, he seems like he's really, really wanting to come and. And be a part of the department and, uh, I think he will do well. We, uh, me and Chris, our lieutenant love has got a saying, we, we can teach somebody to be a good officer, but we can't teach them to have good morals. And good values that, that they either are going to have that or they don't. And, uh, I believe he does. Um, so I believe we can, the law enforcement part, we can teach him. And he, he's very, I mean, I don't think he's very, very intelligent on that, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Few more like that.
Yeah. I thought I had another one, but we had to pass on it. I can tell you about that later.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you all.
EMS salary enhancement fund crisis response funding. Okay, so we talked about setting up a C I S M class. That's what the annual authority on it. And I've been looking at it and there was no way to get one in toward the end of the year. Um. Andrewton County is hosting one in March. I, um. Stand by. I think it's really silly for us to host a class because I'm telling you, I've done it before and we didn't have people show up. Um, if you all still want me to set it up, absolutely will, but my preference would be that we simply share this with all fire departments. And just pay for them to take it to class in Franklin. I don't even care if we reimburse them for mileage to drive there. But if they're having one an hour and a half away, why should we? It's got fifty seats, so there's no way. No way it'll be, though if you all really want me to have one, I will schedule one as soon as I can.
I'm okay with sharing that one, yeah. I mean, I do. So it makes, that makes sense to have your own.
We're sharing it more than Franklin. It's in Franklin.
Oh, Franklin.
Yeah, that's not, that's an hour and a half, right?
Yeah.
How long's the class?
It's the twenty first to the twenty third. It's Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Yeah.
Is that something we'd be, we'd be allowed to pay people's mileage to drive there? Like is that?
That money would become out of.
EMS.
Yeah, under the EMS.
So you'd have to check with.
Well, but I mean, like from the county side, is there going to be a problem?
If you send us the reimbursements, I mean, no more than what we're getting now for the reimbursements. I mean.
Okay.
If it's, if it approved, if the state approves it for your purpose.
Okay. Well, then we'll, we'll tackle that if that works. I mean, if we made people's mileage and there'd be no reason to just go there and take.
Money coming out of.
EMS salary and EMS response. We have.
Don't just take them.
Yeah, we have to spend it on crisis response and that's better struggle.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good idea.
That motion.
So, you know, that we send them to Frank, Franklin.
I'll second that. I'll prove it all second. And this might be a record. It's.
I was looking at the same thing.
So I do have a couple of things, um, the maintenance truck. I looked at a couple of options. I talked to you all the last meeting about caps because that's what the guys wanted to capture the ladder rack. However, I went to Global because they were closest. I know you guys said Winchester, but. I tried to build them online and I needed to see and physically be able to get a price. Um, so I was just going to price compare. However, um, a bed cap with toolboxes is just shy of six thousand dollars. So I figured no point digging any further into that. Um.
I knew they'd be expensive.
So I didn't realize it'd be that expensive. I was guessing like three to four because like actually I leave Malworth Towers the other day. Set mice trap and vacuum and poop. Um, and we had a guy from Conex come up in his truck. He has a cap that had the toolbox size. It's going to be thirty two hundred for his from Global. But I don't know when he bought it either. Um, so a couple other options. The guy at Global said what a lot of people do, and we can order them from Amazon or from them, is they get a bed slider. And then they just put their pack out boxes or like heavy duty totes on them and just put a tonneau cover. A bed slider is about fifteen hundred bucks and depending on what kind of, well, if we get a tonneau cover that we can put a ladder rack one, two. Is another eleven hundred. A ladder rack from them is nine hundred. I figured you all would say no to that too. So I looked at, um, topside toolboxes, which is what we talked about to begin with. Um, these are what I found on Amazon. Jeff and I looked at them yesterday. Um. So these are sixty inch because, um, there needs to be space for the ladder racks to now it. They're five hundred and fifty dollars a, what are they? I'm sorry.
Okay, this is the rack.
Oh, that's right, sorry. Yeah, five hundred and fifty dollars a piece plus the brackets. We need, they're about ninety two bucks a set. And then a ladder rack, this is an eight hundred pound ladder rack. The crossbar is like you all want and it's two eighty five. Um, it's eight hundred pounds. I can't imagine the guys. So this is the total cost of fifteen seventy seven.
Well, we need.
That's the toolbox on each side plus the ladder rack and two sets of brackets.
For two trucks.
That's just for one.
Got one truck, one truck, it's not too bad. Yeah, I think that's why we need to go.
Yeah.
Need two of these.
Yeah. Yeah, two sets of those ladder rack. I, do you guys think eight hundred pound ladder racks enough? I mean, I, I think that's a lot of weight.
Eight hundred pounds, yeah.
So Jeff said he wanted to probably put it all one, as long as we order the right stuff. Well, and, um, that's not on the agenda. I'll do a purchase order for it. We'll put it under accounts payable. Because it always come out of our regular budget.
Okay.
As soon as our income comes over, okay. Uh, you guys did your request for payment for the final drawdown. Let's see. Having the war memorial log, I guess we don't really have any more discussion on that right now. Just a reminder to talk to the Legion folks to see.
Well, that's, well, that's all going around.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're all for it. Uh, the V F W down in Henry Paul night, but we said they could help. Uh, I haven't got a chance to contact the banks. I think the banks will help them. Um, you got a lot of money in the banks. Why don't you chase?
Now, I'll, I'll talk to someone. What did the Legion say? We're not fifty thousand dollars, so we need a lot of.
So I talked to V F W for Ashby.
I'm thanking.
Uh, I, I reached out to the person I know there and she immediately invited me to their meeting. And I went to the meeting and discussed on what we was looking at, what we was wanting to do, wanted to know if they wanted to be on board. Uh, both financially and maybe even with the, with a mind or something like that. And they were absolutely a hundred percent on board, uh, and they were like the rest of us. I believe they thought that that memorial was for the whole county and not just for, just not just people, guys or. I haven't heard from Richly's, V F W or Legion yet. Uh, they have my name and number and. Actually, the people at Fort Ashby said they were going to talk to Richly's too, so.
Okay.
I think, I think we can rate.
So, so let me ask you this. I mean, can you do a regular purchase order for that real quick, please? Courthouse materials and sponsor side. Um.
I didn't go to change the whole. It could come in with that.
So. Not a decision, but so I can get official pricing to work from. Which are you guys, are you thinking just replace the original wall? Or are you thinking like if we do the concrete in that plaza? I think it'd be really cool to do a statue and then all of the names listed like on a base for to do a.
Statue of Soldier or something.
Because there's going to be, if we do that plaza, which I guess I need to show you pricing for that and I'll work that at the next meeting. Um. That would be really cool to have a war memorial statue in the center of it as a centerpiece too, because we talked about statues before.
Right.
That'd be really awesome, like a statue with, uh.
I'm in favor of that.
Like an octagon base that has all the wars and the. Names listed, something like that, or we can just replace the wall. But I just need, we have the wall price, like we're going to the statue.
What is the wall price again?
Fifty five.
I can only imagine what a statue and a base would be though, compared to that. And, and so, uh, going another route. Just adding, can we just add names to the back of that? Or to the front, then we fill it up and then move it to the back of what's there now.
So she said we can. That was one of the options that gave you all the last meeting. I already agreed it. Um.
And just leave it where it's at? So just thinking. Or the cheapest route.
How big is it?
It is going to be, it's going to be. If we did the plaza, it's pretty big.
So.
Pretty long.
If we engrave additional names on the existent, existing monument to fill in front and back. The cost is two hundred and fifty dollars per name. If there'd be other design work or anything, that's extra.
You can consider the name. Precision of it because.
Consider the name, right, about this big.
The only problem with adding names though is like, I think some of the wars are pretty close to full. Like if you've got two names, they need to go to one.
We'd have to extend that. And if we had a list of all the names, then we could.
So what would we do with the old monument if we build a new plaza monument? Send them to V F W or someplace like that? I have no idea because it'd be completely useless to us.
I know.
It has no value.
It would be useless, really. You shouldn't do couch for V F W. Well, I don't know. I mean, it's.
Came from the city of God.
It would have to go somewhere. Would have to go somewhere.
I mean, I think we should probably get the first step, get it on first.
Yeah, exactly. I worry. We're doing the plaid statue.
I mean, I can price it. Can you put this on the agenda? I forgot to email you on.
I know it's going to be expensive, but maybe we can get it funded.
Well, even if we didn't do a statue, like, you know, in the cemeteries where like at family sites, they have like the big. I say a pillar, but it's almost like a triangle thing.
Yeah.
Like even if we did something like that, that was just more of a, that had the names listed or. I'm not opposed to anything. I just think the statue would be very important. It would be something people would look at, right?
It needs something, it's a big nice, it needs to be something really, really.
One thing we were talking about them, putting the statue of Jack Rawlings there sitting on a bench. You know, like going down the sidewalk. So if you have the statue there and then you have a statue there, it's just kind of.
Jack Rawlings could be looking at the soldier statue. Yeah. I mean, it doesn't matter. I can, I can look. I have no idea what the statue costs. I've never bought a statue, never priced a statue. I just think that if we are going to have that there, that would be a really cool.
It would be.
And people would look at it.
Right.
But I'll just price the statue and then we can.
I'm going to turn my cheese.
Yeah, it's probably might be more, but that's probably right. It's probably more expensive than the wall.
I don't want it to.
Of course, that wall is a huge slap of grade. I mean, the base isn't.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be that much more graded than that and just whatever the brawn statue costs.
How many names? Do you know how many names?
Hundred and sixteen.
Hundred and sixteen?
Yeah.
What, what he said?
That's what we have. We'll probably have.
No.
Now, are they?
No, he said, oh, one hundred and ninety is what we need to leave space for.
Now, are they the ones that got killed or are they the ones that?
They, they were, they died.
Right.
While in service. It's so during a war.
Yes.
So he's even talking about, uh, uh, even including Cold War because there was a couple of people from mental county that passed away. They were on a mission during the Cold War. They were on a mission on an airplane. The airplane crashed.
Oh, they should be included.
They were included. So he wanted to add a whole new section as far as Cold War. Yeah, he said, leave space for a hundred and ninety names. But I think.
I think he has a hundred and sixty, but he wants to leave space for.
That sounds right. That's right.
I would say let's price the statue. Make it that's a night.
That's if we even do the plaza. We have to do that. But.
There everything's nothing.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to keep Roy involved in this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
He has done, been doing research for years.
Is he a veteran?
Yes.
Okay, I assume so.
Yeah, he was in the army.
Okay.
But he has, he has been doing research on these names for years.
Yeah.
Well, I did talk to him about the statue on election night. Um, in the plaza. But yeah, for sure, we'll have to. We just gotta figure out what's going to cost. And honestly, he probably has some connections that could. Help us fundraise quicker and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, uh, wanna talk to Fort Ashby, what they do, they have bricks and stuff with names on it. And they get a prosper. So they say, they got better prices from prosper. Places prosper. I'd really like to deal with Mineral County establishment, but.
Maybe we could see if.
I don't even know how that works because the lady, their office is in Piedmont. The lady who sells and stops at that.
Oh, really? Well, we were wondering if maybe we could. See if they would match the price. See if Piedmont would match the price.
Oh, oh, another, oh, yeah, I mean, I think that'd be a reasonable ask.
Yeah. So we keep it in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so just we'll continue to talk about that and.
Yeah. Yeah, there's.
That's not something we wanna do till renovations are finished anyways, cause that's really expensive. Um. Let's see. Totally trumps. Hey, the only other thing I had is the court security grant and I just got the approved one yesterday. So just. Got with P three to get pricing, um. The, we have five thousand extra dollars because what we applied for. I had gotten quotes from a different vendor and then when we bid it out, it came in five thousand dollars less than what the grant amount was. Um. So what I wanna, I, I talked to magistrate and family court because they both had strong opinions on what we should do with it. Um. And one of the issues we've been having for years is the magistrates can't watch their cameras. Um. The only way we can fix that is by putting a wireless access point in and buying them all computers.
Okay.
So because they can't use Supreme Court Network to view it. So I put that in there. Um. This all just came about. So I put that in there, twenty five hundred dollars to buy them Windows based tablets. Total, twenty hundred dollars total for all of their tablets. Two hundred for a wireless access point. Um. They had had some concerns about the door coming from the jury room into the courtroom. And magistrate Bronson has always had concerns about the door coming from the magistrate courtroom back into their office suite. And then the main door into their suite is a glass oval. Um. So when I spoke to them, they would like mag locks on each side of the courtroom that comes into the private suite to actually secure everything. Makes sense. Um, however, the doors they present presently have, um. It would be pointless to put mag locks on. They're like, um. Or.
Paper thin.
Paper thin. Um, so I priced, which the grant won't pay for doors, but they'll pay for the mag locks. I priced exterior steel doors. They're two to three hundred bucks a piece in our guys to put them in.
That mean we need two?
Well, if we're gonna do it, I'd like to do three and just go ahead and replace that glass door too. Of course, Amy was the only one who said something about the glass. I need to confirm that the magistrates has had something they want. But to me, it would make sense to get that glass and that would make their suite. Much, much more secure. Um. So. I'm just hopeful the court security grant stuff's okay because I've already sent it in for approval because like the deadline is now. Um, it adds two additional cameras and it changes some existing mag locks over to strike locks. Um. I've been trying to switch everything to strikes as much as possible because mag locks, I mean, everyone knows that when you pull a fire alarm, they come up locked. Um, so strikes don't do that because when the power's out, they remain locked. You can still get out. So it switched two doors over to strikes too. Um. So number one, hoping you all are okay with the things I did, but I did, I did court talk to family court and magistrate court and three extra panic buttons. Um, for the new judge. But, um, that was all one magistrate because that, this was specifically for that building. Um, so it had to go there. So I spoke to them and that, these are the things they wanted. So it's what I sent in and they approved it. And we thought, number one, do I need to adjust that? I mean, I guess I can still ask you to change if you all feel like. Some of that was.
I'm okay with that.
And then.
Cause we have the.
Number two, um. Those doors, I mean, that's something within like, I can just buy it out of the other buildings, materials and supplies, but I wanted to ask you all to make sure you're okay with it.
Well, a couple grand of pages.
Yeah, we're, we're not at less than a thousand dollars for the three doors and the guys that put them in. Jeff has almost finished my kitchen. They did a fabulous job. Um. It's tight squeezes where they have to manhandle some things, but. Kitchen I want looks fantastic. Um, but if I, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to, I'll probably send the guys out to Menards, but I gotta price Lowe's too because. When we bought these doors, they were three hundred bucks cheaper per door from Menards. Um. But I think there's still, I mean, do you all think we should just do a solid pour like that or just do exterior steel doors? I feel like the exterior steel is probably better and they're cheaper than those.
Yes, yeah.
So, okay, and. Maybe that's actually all I had. Yeah, it's all I had.
Thank you. What's it gonna next?
So since the last meeting. The, the health department free bid.
In the song.
Uh, was, uh. Then we had our, uh, special work session. Uh, that should be a better. And then I went to the, uh, Frankfurt football game in Frankfurt. Poppy end of it. That's another thing to do, but poppy end of it.
Our playoffs, did they get a straight number with playoffs?
Not yet, every. Uh, not yet. Not yet, they haven't. Cause they need to make a decision. Um. Two schools that was fighting it. Major things yesterday and now a decision needs to be made, so. Um. See what else did I do?
You got the work session.
Yeah, I've got the work session in there.
That I like for the, that fundraiser.
Um, Valley Hospital, Brookfield Farm.
Oh, yeah, it was Saturday, the ninth.
Yeah, I went to that. Uh, I was at the rent a pre-bid meeting. Um, I spoke with, uh. I spoke with the, the people down in, that has the property in Richly. Spoke with them. I had a phone call with, uh, Marcus Rice and a phone call with town originally. And then, uh, after the paper come out Thursday night, I had a, I had a meeting with town originally Friday morning. Um. And. Let's see. I'm gonna miss something in here. I don't know what it is. I guess that's it. Yeah, I was at the, uh, nuclear bank. Yeah, he's, uh, I was at the work session here with the Emmett Authority. And we need to get that on the agenda too, correct?
I was gonna wait to hear from Colby. Uh, we have to actually wait for the opioid committee meets.
Hmm, okay.
Colby got out of town. He wanted to, he wanted to wait till he gets back to take care of any issues.
And we worked canvassing of the election, uh.
All your canvass.
Yeah, I was at a pre-bid meeting for the, the rent and also I went to region H. Signing a paper for PDC and I met with Angie Curl about the tire pickup. I've been trying to get. I think we need a tire pickup in Mineral County other than one day a year. Cause I found two more places. Huh? Oh. Oh, I know you just cleared this. You're, you're about like I am. I feel miserable. But anyway, uh, she's, we can get a, we can get a trailer. Tracker trailer. We can get one parked here in Mineral County someplace. The only thing we need, we need three things. We need, where will it be located? And it needs to be behind the fence, a locked fence someplace. And we need the hours of operation and who's gonna manage it. We need somebody there when people brings in tires. What I would like to do is get a hold of Hampshire County and see if we can keep it at Burnington and we have to get a hold of Lee, Lee Thorne first and see if we can keep it at Burnington. And maybe we could get it maybe like two Saturdays a month. One Saturday a month if Hampshire would help us. That, uh, it's generally a couple of miles here in Hampshire County.
So you're thinking who would be manning it?
Yeah, we need somebody to go volunteer. Well, not necessarily volunteer, but we need somebody to manage because you gotta have somebody there.
Right.
If we do it like one day a month even. You know, like eight to twelve or whatever.
Then one person could do it. You need two people.
Well, might need to. That's why I like, well, Hampshire shit, they would be willing to.
Maybe help them. Maybe like have one of our maintenance guys there and bank or.
Well. I'd go help some, huh?
Like how often?
Saturday, one Saturday a month.
One, two Saturday a month.
Well, two Saturdays a month. Or if you want to volunteer, we'll do three Saturdays a month.
Well, you said maintenance staff. That's the problem is they're not gonna wanna work at Saturday.
You'd have to have somebody to each fire department at different.
Well, we don't have to bring it in seven.
Yeah, we don't have a tractor to move it. It's gonna be like a forty or fifty five foot trailer.
Yeah.
Fifty two foot trailer.
I mean, and. We need to think about how we wanna do this.
Yeah, because you'll have to have people unloading the.
You're gonna have to have somebody helping and they gotta be there in the. Rules you gotta go by with these tires. Can't be wheels, can't be, can't be huge truck tires, tractor tires.
Right.
They're, they're like.
The, the problem would be finding people who's gonna pay them, I guess. Will he need payment?
No. Don't check on it. But we can, the money's there. We can get the trailer. Okay, if we want, it's whatever I, I just thought we, I wanted to let you guys know so you can think about it and see what you wanted to do.
Alright.
So. I don't know. I'd like to see it. Cause I got about. You know, I found about fifty tires laying around on places that needs to be moved. At one, it's very obvious. Not Gracius Gap Road. It's, I don't know how they got there. I don't know how, who put American. People's tracks along the wide place they don't mount. Do what? Twenty second. Say twenty, twenty. I thought we did twenty second.
Okay, yeah, we need to think about that.
Who's in that?
The problem would be just who's gonna.
That says a twenty. I thought it was twenty one. Mineral County person.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I'm with you. I don't know. You think we should maybe contact Hampshire County? Then we go into it with us?
Yeah.
Just state road in Burnington's there. They, we'd have to get permission from Lee Thorne to do it. And the thing of it is them getting the gate open. On Saturday morning though.
Yeah.
That's another thing. But I think Saturday morning would be the best time to do it.
Even if you did like half a day on Saturday?
Eight to twelve. Yeah, I don't know if he would do that. What, what if he wouldn't do that? Could we do it on a Friday morning, say for an example or?
Yeah.
And you're gonna have people saying they can't do it on Friday morning because they gotta work. Trying to get stuff there. That's, that's the only problem. I, there's, won't be a, there's, there's a problem.
Yeah.
Well, talk to Lee, see what you can do.
Talk to who?
Lee, Lee Thorne.
See?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll probably be the best. Start there. I'll give them, we'll see. We should have people to man it.
Yeah, so anyway, I thought Angie checked on yours. That's the route.
Alright.
Our next meeting is Tuesday, the third, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
And will we open?
It's six o'clock. That's an evening meeting.
Yeah.
And you guys are gonna put the commission meeting back to normal?
So I'm.
January.
I am hoping. Now, let me ask you another question. We changed the seventeenth to the eighteenth, correct? At one o'clock.
One o'clock.
Yeah.
Cause Dutch and I have to be gone the seventeenth.
Okay. Go on these.
Okay, that's it?
That's true.
Alright, that was at the work session. That was at the fundraiser dinner for County Valley Hospital, Brookfield Farm, election canvas. I think that was it.
That was, we're actually VFW. Yeah, and I talked to Paul Mike. And I talked to Paul. Well, anything will help, anything. Blimey, yeah.
Of course, we finishing up with the election and all the stuff that goes after it. I did get your approval to go ahead and pay the bills. I got the poll worker. We ran the, drove the poll worker checks around to the local post offices yesterday. Um. Some of them were delivered yet this morning. Um. Been analyzing that and keeping everything and, um, I'm trying to get some stuff about them.
Perfect.
Okay, we won't worry about that.
I guess.
Do I have to go?
Well, I have to go.
I have to go. Hey, you guys, I need you something.
We don't want.
I think it's mostly scientists that will be all.
I like that.
Um, okay, we gotta be out there at five thirty, right?
Let's go.
Yeah, five thirty. The, where are we going? The River?
No, it's, uh. This one. I had a running time. I forget where it was.
She wanted that count.
But it should be good. Hey, yeah.
You have this one.
The, the Erickson Alumni Center.
Yeah. Where in the heck is that?
It's on alumni drives. Looks like it's right beside the hospital.
Where are you going? That's at PIA. Remember they're trying to raise PIA and they're having a hearing. So Dutch and I were gonna ride out and put our two cents for it then. We did, we know, realized how much that's gonna cost. Did we get those numbers fifteen percent?
Seventeen, seventeen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
How much is that?
How much are your insurance costs now? Six hundred and some thousand?
Yes.
So you figure sixteen percent on to that?
Another hundred and twenty.
Yeah, you're looking at around eight hundred thousand dollars.
Plus, they were gonna add to the deductible. I think the plan C that we have everybody on that we pay for right now is, uh, they wanna take a deductible from thirty two to one thousand. There's another eight hundred dollars on wherever you believe if we cover the government.
That part is, of course, we're probably getting pretty close, but private insurance still isn't cheaper.
Yeah. I know, but a hundred twenty thousand dollar increase?
Well, I mean, we'll certainly price it again. They won't cut a price until. May, but April.
And it's really, yeah, this won't take effect till July one. Do we wanna take county vehicle? If you want to. Does county vehicle available?
Like, like break the second?
No, no, this evening.
Yeah.
We're except for now.
Yes.
There'll be a phone once her, she can leave the keys in her.
You wanna ride a little, eat it, right? Oh, good. Kind of meaning to go through. Anything else? I guess we need to do the bills. As I say, we're motion for adjournment. We can't, yeah.
Their meeting that's moved from December seventeenth to the eighteenth, that's it, still at eight thirty in the morning?
No, it's one o'clock.
One o'clock, okay.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I wrote down anyway. That's why.
One o'clock.
And so would you go?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's what I got. One o'clock, maybe. One o'clock.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, so there are time.
There was, there was a paper. They had all that broken down.
I'm trying to remember too, the night this year and give it to them next.
Hey, I forgot you're going through the long portion of building one down. Wow, considerable. Uh, went down to two thousand. Not good enough before it turned, but it went downtown.
It should've went down more than that because last month wasn't a high energy usage month. Perhaps like, no, it was like.
The right human being is.
The election now. Empty, the whole building's been converted down the evening.
And well, apparently it's got more control than you think.
Apparently.
You're right.
Yeah.
Did you guys see where Elon Musk just got that thing out to butt into the election? Seems like. Huh?
Yeah.
He stopped it.
Is it, was he teamed up with, um, Joanna Gaines?
I'm not sure who he teamed up with, but I know a person's got them and they said it, they do work.
What is it do?
They, you plug it into a receptacle, and somehow it saves you money on your electric bill. It is, I don't know how they work. But. I've been, they're forty some dollars a piece, you get three of them for a hundred and twenty some dollars. What is one nineteen West? I've been thinking about getting one there. Forty dollars. That's nice.
What time are you all in? I know, when you get there at five thirty, I'd say you probably leave, uh. It'll be an hour and a half to get out there. We left it forward, maybe a little bit forward, forward.
Okay.
Like maybe we pour the tail, and give us a little turn down.
I'll tell you what, just want me to know when my center, we'll grab the vehicle there.
I'll tell you what, I'm waiting to see how I feel.
Alright.
If I get feeling better, I might go.
I don't know, I mean, if it's sort of like a hearing, right?
I think so.
I think it's ours, public hearings.
So what time are you leaving level one?
Order to four.
Four, four.
Four, four. Alright, honestly. The approach probably needs to be pushing the legislature on it, because that's what's happening, is the legislature's not.
Yes.
They're not, uh.
They're not helping.
Well, no, they used to, uh, what's the word? You don't have enough money, it's not there's a way.
They used to what?
Subsidize, they used to subsidize.
Yeah, yeah. That doesn't happen.
Well, now what they keep doing is they keep giving teachers pay increases, but they're. They're saving employees, their health insurance costs keep going up, so they're not actually seeing any increases.
I would think, I, I agree with you. The legislature's gonna have to come on board, because I don't think they're just gonna.
Right.
Not do an increase.
And I know, according to that one article, that, is her name, Megan or Megan? Jane, so it works for C C.
Megan, Megan Jane.
Megan, okay, I don't know why I read your name as Megan.
That's how it's spelled.
She, I was reading the one article, and I guess P I A is trying to lower their reimbursement rates, because that's one of the things they're saying is hurting them. They're at one hundred and ten percent of Medicare. I guess they want it to back down to a hundred percent, but I guess the hospitals and lobbies before you had the two hundred pens, possibly, they couldn't afford to operate.
Yeah, the hospital just lobbied to get them, get them to where they're at now. Because they were all threatening to not accept. P I A interns. Because they weren't reimbursed, I think they were, and they reimbursed ninety percent of.
Yeah, Medicare rates.
Medicare, yeah, so. They just lobbied to get them, and basically they just gave them a threat, you guys don't raise them more. Not accept your intern anymore.
Which I do wonder how realistic that threat is, because how many public employees are there in the state of Western Virginia?
Yeah.
And there's for sure tens of thousands of people in the P I H, United States, I'll say hundreds. Well, maybe not, just probably a million of state people.
One point eight, then.
Yeah. The air conditioner in the courtroom, you all approved the fact.
Yeah, I know, I just wondered where, I couldn't remember where it went, yeah, I know we did.
It took that long to get the stuff, it is working well though, election night, it was freezing in there.
That's you.
Now, everyone in the jury box agreed, maybe you were running around and talk, but all of us in the jury box were, uh. Agree, it was very cold.
Man.
So, thank the T S D here.
And all of those agreements between the P S Ds and you all have been executed and filed, so we're good. And by the next meeting, I do plan to have a final balance of what's left in our.
Okay, I assume you got an email from, from P S D, they want us to initiate. Yeah, funding. Initiate searching for funding, pine for funding.
Well, region A, yeah, I, um. I assume you all saw my response to that email, so. Region A wants to apply for community development block grant funds for a specific P S D project, I asked Ken which one it is. You guys know which one that is?
Yeah, that's the one.
I was gonna have over there.
Harshlevega Ryan.
So, the public service districts aren't eligible to apply for community block grant funds, so you all have to do it.
Correct.
Um, I was gonna have on the next agenda, but she just emailed us yesterday. So.
Yeah.
I assume everybody's gonna be fine with that, I couldn't imagine a reason why we wouldn't, it's just a bunch of signatures, reach, they does all the work.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's gonna be on the next agenda. I just wanna send me the.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm sorry.
I am, during the presentation, doing good winter.
Well.
I reckon the people don't show up, they.
Yeah. Don't push it through, probably.
Think it's better than nothing.
Go on, yeah.
I don't think it'll make the difference, I think we're in a sixteen percent increase, must legislature subsidize, I'm glad you didn't go.
Yeah, I think it'd be worthwhile, but I think we need to go.
And if anything, you'll at least have a better understanding of what's happening.
What?
Because they can.
Oh, yeah, I know. I know.
Sixteen percent is a lot of money, considering they were twelve last year, and what was it, ten year before?
Yeah, I thought we'd, after last year, I thought we was done, but.
I thought we were done for a while anyhow, yeah.
Healthcare is a big fraction. It's all out of control.
It is.
Wait, if you look at the cost of buying down those doctor chefs. Nothing against Doctor Gervais at all, but. Twenty-nine hundred dollars a chef? That's a lot.
Two hundred dollars an hour, thirty-five. Two thirty-five an hour.
Thirty-five.
I mean, that is a lot of money.
There's money, right? What shame about the.
Money.
Uh, you know, your kid, she's good friend with your sister.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I see them together.
Yeah, she is. What happened to him?
I don't know. I can't even remember, I don't know if he, they were. But they live on a town, they live up on fifty, you run up to three lengths, they go left, up there, but normally rude. She worked for school, she worked, she burned those with the skeleton, her legs. She's a man.
Yeah.
He wasn't that old, was he? Of course, I made that comment, I made that comment the other day, and they told me you don't have to be old to die.
Oh, by the way.
Things like that, so. Even head key, I'm not sure.
That's one? I mean, that's one?
No. Those are hers, these are hers, these, oh, yeah, these veterans. I guess I have some of these. We have a motion to approve the. Count payable, so the moderation.
Second.
And yes.
They brought you to Rashenham.
Yes.
Yeah, I said I got second and I approve.
So. So much. It's going to prove all of that. You understand?
Well, pretty good.
Make a motion with your.
Our.
No, I made.